The time is 5:30 on Monday, May 8, and I'd like to call this work session to order. Welcome, everyone. Up first on our agenda are lobbyist update. So I see Mr. Romero, so Gil, take it away.
All right. Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, great. First of all, it's the 120th day of the 120-day session. So we're on the last day. We assume they're going to work up until midnight tonight. We worked all weekend on a number of bills for the city, but most importantly, the bill that we worked on and was heavily lobbied is House Bill 1294. That's the air quality permitting bill, and I wanted to to give you an update on that. And, and one, I have to say in my, you know, three decades of lobbying up at the legislature, this bill came down to the 119th day on Sunday, or actually Saturday, when we were working with both the sponsors of the bill and the minority leader in the Senate, Lundin, and Senator Kirkmire, both Republicans, were assisting us in trying to suggest some amendments that would at least make the bill palatable to Everas and Cement Company here in Pueblo, but also City of Pueblo and a number of other manufacturing entities. And on Saturday, the discussions broke down. Senator Winter, who's the sponsor of the bill, said that she was going to hold pretty tough, and, and that was the word she was getting from the environmental community. Which is fine. We went back, we had discussions. We, there are a number of stakeholders, obviously, including Everas and other manufacturers, meeting with the governor's office. We sort of revived our discussions on Saturday, or excuse me, on Sunday, and we came to an agreement on Sunday. And it came at a time where we thought there wasn't the possibility of coming to an agreement, but I, I think that enough pressure was being put to bear by Republicans who said that they would start to stall things even more and filibuster more. And, and I think there was at least the motivation to try to come to some kind of agreement on a bill. As you, as you remember, this bill was introduced in mid-April with not a lot of stakeholdering. It had a huge amount of changes to the permitting process and was objectionable, objectionable. There's objections that were raised by a number of entities about how, how this particular bill was set out, including the governor's office, including the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, who were going to be tasked with a lot more burden on the burden, on the permitting side. And, and that bill had a $30 million price tag. As you know, we got to the first hearing, they struck, they, they struck below the title and amended the bill. They took out a lot of the permitting process. When it went over to the Senate, there were still a number of objections raised by Everas and others. And we continued to, to work with them. As I said, what happened on Sunday really, it was really incredible. So three things that I want to talk to you about that made this bill acceptable to Everas and manufacturers and, and, and a number of other entities. One of the biggest concerns that Evera shared and others shared is that there's this interim committee that was appointed that's going to study the permitting process for air. The concern we had with that, and it's sort of a nuanced thing, I'll just give you a brief sort of tutorial, is that we didn't want that interim committee to have the ability to introduce bills out of that interim committee. The reason that's really important is that if they would have had the ability to take to not only do the interim committee and have stakeholder input, there's almost sort of the import. When a bill comes out of an interim committee, it comes in with a lot more standing than any regular bill introduced by a legislator. And that makes it much more difficult. If one of those five bill or whatever, if they decided to do three bills out of that interim committee, it would have been difficult if there was something in one of those bills that the city objected to, or, you know, one of our business, somebody from our business community objected to. It would have been difficult to defeat it. So that was really an important one for Everas. They didn't want them to have this committee to have bill, bill authority, and we got that amendment in. The, the, the second piece of this has to do with something that was in the original bill that, that allowed citizen complaints to go forward. And they had a different standard. They, the sponsors, had a different standard. And what we, we ended up with in terms of a compromise to this private right of action was rather than frivolous or trivial and it, the, the new standards frivolous, falsified, or trivial. It sounds like a sort of a trivial point, but it's an important point in terms of air quality, being able to decide whether or not to let a complaint go forward. And each one of these things, when you look from a manufacturer's perspective like Everas, they don't want uncertainty in their business. And so they want to make, make sure that if somebody's going to bring some sort of complaint forward, that they've done something wrong, they want to make sure that it at least meets a minimum standard for their investors. So that was a significant piece. The third one, which is a little bit more technical, had to do with the definition of cumulative impact. That was a big deal. They had it. The, that definition was in the bill. The governor's office didn't want a definition in the bill. Manufacturers didn't want an impact. Oil and gas didn't want that definition in there. They held fast until Sunday and finally took it out. And cumulative impact will now go to rulemaking and will give all of the stakeholders an opportunity to have input, input onto what cumulative impact is. So that's the compromise. We, we worked closely with Alvarez all through the weekend from Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They're comfortable with where the bill is. I know the folks in oil and gas clients that I represent, it's, it's not the, the greatest bill, but they think that they can continue to do, to do business in Colorado. I think everybody feels pretty comfortable with that compromise. And, you know, shout out again to the city of Pueblo, and you know, to use its, you know, its lobbying and advocacy to help reach a, what I think is a good compromise. I, we were sitting up in the gallery on Sunday when we struck the deal. We talked to a number, a couple of lobbyists for the environmental groups. They were unhappy, which means that it's probably a good compromise. They, they, they know that we'll probably have to, we'll probably see something next year, but that was a huge bill that you had a lot of influence on, and, and we really appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to work for that on, on, on behalf of the city. I'm just going to mention a couple of other things that are still out there. They're watching this evening before they close out the, the session at midnight. As we still don't have a good idea on the land use bill, although we know that in talking to our partners at CML and CCI, they feel like they've got eight strong votes in the Senate to adhere to the Senate position, which is really basically struck everything in that land use that had to do with taking away power, taking away local control power away and, and make it into an interim committee and a study. The, the House went back to the original version of the bill and added more stuff that took more power away from local government. The Senate, I don't think is going to budge, but we don't have an answer for that. When we come back next week with a more extended summary of, of, of the session in review, we'll come back and, and if we hear tonight, we'll obviously send out a report tomorrow to update you on the, on the land use bill. The other one I just wanted to bring to your attention, I know I'm running out of time, is House Bill 49, 1249. We, we've had, been in conversations and emails with Judge Sykes from Pueblo. I know that you all had concerns about that bill in terms of, you know, you know, raising the age of criminality for children. That bill was never going to pass, or that bill, it could have passed, but it wasn't going to pass in the Senate. The Senate had huge concerns about that bill. They did a strike below. And we'll send you the, the information on that. Essentially, there's going to be a task force that's going to study that particular bill. And, but the, 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 the portions that I know that Pueblo had concerns about, that piece was taken out. I'm going to just pause for a second and see if my two colleagues have anything that I may have misstated or that you need to add.
Those, those were the big pieces that we wanted to mention. The, the one thing on, on land use, as Gil said, we're pretty confident that the Senate has the votes needed to to adhere to the Senate position, which is what the bill was before it went to the House. However, if it goes to conference committee, we're a little worried that they'll, they'll try to strike a compromise and they will end up leaving in some of the bad stuff from the House. So we're still reaching out to people trying to, trying to get that stopped in the Senate and, and adhere to the Senate position. That's the big one. That's the big thing that I wanted to say. So I think you covered it.
Yeah. And then, then the only other things before we let go is that obviously the property tax. They were still working out some details on that. We will get you a full report on what that property tax bill looks, tax bill looks like at the very end. If they probably will vote on it till later on tonight. And then there was a late bill that, that's a companion bill to that for on Tabor that we'll report on as well. So it has been a busy weekend, but I'm really excited that we reached the point and with your help, where Everas and the Cement Company and other manufacturers are comfortable with, with the House Bill 1294. So that's my report. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Romero and team for that update. What questions are there from counsel? Counselor Flores?
Gil, thanks for that report. I, I was interested in the, the tax bill, I guess, the, 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 the use of Tabor money to reduce people's property taxes. Where did that land up? Do you have any idea where that stands or?
That, that was one that they debated extensively yesterday. That's the big hangup. It was in appropriations for about four hours yesterday. Republicans don't like the use of that. I, I think they're going to come to some sort of compromise on that, but, but obviously the two going in tandem in order for them to do. And it's not really a reduction in property taxes, a reduction in the increase of property taxes for folks. But it's significant for, you know, people that are facing an eight or $900 increase or more in their property taxes, but those two have to pass in order. And then the, the other component on the ballot, but that was still in flex. I don't know if you, Ryan or Alec, do you have any update on that?
It's Senate Bill 303, and it's actually being debated right now on the House floor.
So we'll, we'll get a report out to you, Counselor Flores, probably in the morning when we get a final vote on that bill.
Yeah, a lot of my constituents are really concerned about the assessed valuations going up by 25, 30, 35%. Although that isn't as significant as what the mill levy that will be adopted, but I think everybody's kind of worried about how much their property taxes are going to go up, not just here, but everywhere.
I, I, I mean, I, it's, it's, I don't, I mean, we're in the last day with about four hours left. I, 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 I think that they will figure this one out, but you know, and you know, when a bill's introduced in that last week, it, it, you know, it, it's makes significantly harder to work out the controversial pieces and, and I thought that the Democrats had reached some agreement with the Republicans on this one and land use, but apparently the Tabor component for the Republicans is a big deal. So like I said, we'll be watching out all evening. And, you know, once we get a, a good update on what's going to happen, we'll get, get that out to you. But obviously, it's a big, it's a big thing for, you know, residents in Pueblo in terms of property taxes.
Thank you, Gil.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you so much, Mr. Romero, for that update. We look forward to getting written correspondence about tonight's debates and tomorrow.
And we'll, we'll do a comprehensive summary of all of the bills that you were interested in during our three months that we were on the job and, and we'll, we'll have a little bit more time next week to kind of go through sort of a summary of those and kind of a report card. So thank you so much.
Yes, next week, I believe that you're on 30 minutes for our work session agenda.
Right. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Gil.
Have a good evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
So moving on our agenda, our city updates, Miss Lano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Councilman, ma'am gratis. I just have two very brief updates. We've got a packed agenda this evening. And the first is to start with an ARPA update on the work session is in the next agenda item. We have a, a request for ARPA funds from the Boys and Girls Club who would like to sponsor a summer 10-week safe space for teens, for high school students as a pilot program in the city. So we'll hear, we'll hear the presentation next. On this, on the agendas this evening is a resolution for $93,000 from Code Enforcement to request in support of a purchase of a skid steer and a trailer that will greatly assist them in some of the larger cleanups and they don't have to borrow some that are in, in really use at this time of the year for the next four or five months particularly. And on second reading this evening is the Lightson for Safety $200,000 ARPA award to Crime Stoppers of Pueblo, which would be the match to the Black Hills Energy donation to Crime Stoppers to support the Lightson for Safety program. And the last ARPA update is you'll notice on your work session agenda schedule next week, the Southern Colorado Harm Reduction, they had a meeting, the, the team had a meeting last Friday with two city council members and the mayor and some of their team after discussion and some conversation around a modified request. President Graham asked that they come back in with a rescheduled work session update to share those modifications, and you'll see that on, on the work session agenda scheduled for next Monday before we take council's consensus on moving forward for a first reading and second reading. Moving on, I want to give you a quick update that's preliminary right now, but Saturday's Team Up to Clean Up Community Trash Event was, was a huge success. The city is now watching the spring and the fall. There were preliminary data shows over 800 vehicles went through to make drop-offs. There were more than 60 dumpsters that were filled and hauled away. There were approximately 500 tires that were collected. All of the distributions that Black Hills Energy had to make were, were, they were empty. They had vouchers to, to redirect some of those vehicles to the North Sea and Sea disposal. So overall, a very successful community trash dump date. And we'll provide total cost for the event in the coming weeks as we have an opportunity to gather that information. Let me make sure I don't have one additional one. I know that'll be all. And any questions or directions for coming weeks?
Great. Thank you, Miss Lano, for that update. Questions from counsel? It just, I was there all day and it felt like way more tires than 500 tires. Felt like thousands and thousands and thousands. Do we have an idea of how many cars were there?
Over 800 vehicles?
800 vehicles, okay. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll move on right along on our agenda. So next on our agenda are our friends from Boys and Girls Club. So can I have Mr., Ms. Hiron and Ms. Medina to the podium, please? And while they're coming up, I, I just want to tell my fellow counselors that, you know, for the, I guess, for the past five years, I've been working with a coalition in youth advisors to really increase the amount of things that young people have to do in the community. And what I hear all the time from our young people is that there's nothing for teens to do, particularly at night, whether that be during spring break, winter break, over the summer, there's, there's nothing for teens to do. And so for the, over the past five years, we've been really trying hard as a collective coalition to have more things for young people to do. And, and really hearing from young people themselves, that they want a teen center. There's other communities that have a teen center. Pueblo doesn't have that. And I actually was able to think of and approached Boys and Girls Club about this idea of having a teen center and what that would look like, because Boys and Girls Club has a track record of serving teens and young people in the community. And so I'm, I'm really excited that they're here. And so I, you know, just, I'm, I'm excited to hear from Ms. Hiron and Ms. Medina about what a teen center here in Pueblo is going to look like, especially after recovering from the pandemic, when young people's mental health is so disjointed and they're suffering from not being connected to their peers and trusted adults. That I'm, that's why you're here. Thank you so much for being here. So tell us about a teen center.
On now? Great. Well, Madam Chair, thank you so much. And counselors, appreciate being here. Appreciate your all's commitment, I think, to the young people of this community, which you all demonstrate in a lot of different ways. But has Counselor Martinez and I met about a potential pilot project. So we want to share with you a little bit. And so I'm Angela Hiron, President and CEO of Boys and Girls Club, and I'm joined by my colleague.
I'm Becky Medina, Chief Operations Officer with Boys and Girls Clubs.
Great. So as I think Counselor Martinez shared, that this has been going on, I think, 2018. Becky's been a part of those conversations with communities that care, trying to figure out what teens need and, and want, and then trying to implement that. So this certainly isn't new. But then COVID hit, and it certainly has intensified the needs, not only here in Pueblo and Colorado and across the country. But I wanted to start off sharing a couple of data points according to the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. Seriously considering attempting suicide during the past 12 months, in 2021, Pueblo teens, 21% answered yes to that. 16.5 in Colorado answered yes to that. Felt sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row during the past 12 months that they stopped doing some usual activities. Pueblo teens, 49%. And Colorado teens, 40%. So that's partly why we are here today. I'm going to share a few things and then we'll get into the program. And you have that budget in front of you, I hope. The, so not only that, you know, with Boys and Girls Club and our 51 years' experience of serving youth in this community, we also come with the CDC's recommendations on how to help teens and some of their best practice strategies from the CDC is supporting creation of new spaces for youth. Support existing community spaces for youth by increasing enrollment, addressing barriers to youth access. And that's supporting the establishment of joint use agreements that allow use of public facilities for recreation by the public during non-school hours. And the last one, supporting access to pro-social opportunities and safe spaces by ensuring youth have safe, affordable, and reliable transportation. So we have, we come with, I think, understanding and following good data. The CDC, our 51 years' experience, and then we're part of the National Network of Boys and Girls Club of America, who serves over 4 million youths a year at 5,000 different sites all across the country. So with that, we come with that collective wisdom, and even though it's a pilot project, we come with all that resource. And so some of the things that we've decided is Fridays and Saturdays from 1:00 PM to 11:30. Curfew is at noon, or not at noon, but at 12:00 AM. And so that's why we want to end at 11:30. Our goal would be to have 75 teens on a daily basis. And those would only be students who are in high school during this coming school year. So an eighth grader now, when they graduate today or this year, they'll be a ninth grader. If they're graduating this year from high school, they would not be eligible for the program. We're hoping to register at least 300 teens in the nine-week program. No fee. The program would be free to all teens across our community. The staffing and the program would operate with no less than five adults on site. That's a one to eight ratio. Security would be critical, I think, to this point. What we have done for decades is if a young person leaves, they're not eligible to come back in. So that they can't go out and, let's say, they want to have a smoke or, you know, nope, if they leave, they don't come back and they sign in, and then they're signing out when they leave and they're not able to come in till the next day. We also have begun having conversations with city staff who together we want to best serve teens of this community. And so, and we're continuing, and we're hoping to set up another meeting this week with, specific with Quintal Soul, because that's where we think might be the best location. Critical to have a gym, critical to have some multiple or large enough space so different things could be happening. So I want to turn it over. You have that budget, I think, at your seat. But Becky will go over the program.
Thanks, Angela. So our program model is really thinking about designing it around what young people need and, and want. And young people have been saying through the CTC Advisory Group that they want a space, a space to be, hang out with their friends. And so we don't want this to be so restrictive that, and it's so prescribed that young people aren't going to want to come to Boys and Girls Club. So making that space to provide activities that they want. Coffee bar, games, DJ, art, theater, those activities that, that they really want, and they can be creative. But also recognizing that, you know, we're raising our future workforce and providing some opportunities for them to have some certifications. So we can offer Serve Safe, we can offer teen mental health first aid, conflict mediation, soft skills certifications and, and others. This isn't just Boys and Girls Club. This is going to be a partnership with other city organizations and individuals to really strengthen and provide activities for a wide variety of young people. What we know is young people want to be involved in something. And if we as community people and organizations don't step up, they will find their own activities. And unfortunately, we've seen what some activities have done. We have had too many youth fatalities, whether through suicide, accidents, substance abuse. And this may not stop all of this, but this is going to provide a safe space for young people to be. And I'm excited in talking with the city parks and recreation and looking at El Centro at a space that if you go there, I, it's pretty exciting to see all of the young people who are taking advantage of that space. So to have safe supervised spaces with adults and activities going on, this could be a really exciting thing for our young people, but our community as well. So in the budget, if you have questions, a significant portion of the budget is for staffing. Recognizing that, you know, this is a temporary position for a short-term project, so we really do want to provide some funding to attract folks that already have those skills and expertise to work with, with teens and young people. And those later days and weekends, we built in for transportation, knowing that we may need to purchase supplies, equipment, and furniture that's really going to support this program. We don't want young people to have to flip the bill for the certification, so we want to build that cost in. And then field trips for young people that are taking advantage of the certification programs or other programs, they can earn incentives. And then we've built in some field trips to that training for the staff as well. And then also the in-kind space for what we hope will be El Centro. Questions?
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Ms. Medina and Ms. Hiron for that presentation. And I, I, I'm biased, but I'm very excited about this. So what questions are there from counsel? Counselor Atencio?
Are you going to target the population you just talked about, the, the kids who took this survey? Is there any way that you can target those kids? Because the ones that are saying, yeah, I, I've had ideas about suicide, those are the ones that we want on the program.
So Larry, it's our Councilman, Atencio. The survey is a statewide survey that happens every other year. Every teen that goes to school that day, they take it, they, and, and so these are the results of that. So there's, and it's probably anonymous. And so we don't know, but I think teens today, when you're talking about half of the teens who took the survey, already had already had that, those are the kids that are, I think we're going to be serving anyway.
Okay.
Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. How do you plan on getting the word out to some of these teens?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. We serve over 300 teens ourself, so we'll be able to put it out to them. We're trying to do social media. There's, I forget the app, Talk to Nikki Hart, who, tell me the app.
The SoCo Yoga?
Yeah, SoCo Yoga, yes. So somebody in the audience has that too. Great. So through that, it is going to be this tight turnaround. And then, like many communities, the teens themselves, I think they're going to be talking. We'll also be trying to do some kind of pickup leagues. That's why we wanted to have a gym. So we hope that that word gets out. But yeah, it's going to be a little trial and error. But again, we do have access to, you know, we have our teen site already at Central. So for those kids to be able to do it. Because we don't offer those programs on that late or on Saturday. So those kids will be able to participate in that as well.
Great. And think about also reaching out to some of the online high schools. Because it's some of those folks who may want to participate in a little more social interaction with folks of their own age in an out-of-school setting.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Flores?
I just had one question had to do with your, the, the time period you indicated from 1:00 to 11:30. Will they have the opportunity to come in later than 1:00 or?
Yep.
Because it sounds like they have to stay in that place.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. They, they can come at, at 1:00 and, and participate in the activities or they could come at 6:00 or 7:00 or 8:00.
There's flexibility.
The, the one thing to address what I had said, if they leave, they can't come back. If they're coming for the first aid certification, so maybe that's 1:00 to 4:00. And then they're saying, we're going to go, but I'm going to come back at 7:00 tonight. So then there's some kind of those kind of arrangements. It's just that we don't want them hanging out, out and about. Or their parents thinking that they're there and they want their parents to think that they're, and they're not really there.
But their parents can pick them up anytime they want.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Counselor Mastry?
And transportation, you said you're providing transportation. What does that look like?
So we will have a minibus to be able to more so use, but taking kids to tours and potentially to some special events, whether in Denver or Colorado Springs. We're not planning at this point to be able to be doing pickups there that kids need to be able to get there on their own.
And so any, any child in the community, they don't have to be income qualified or anything like that?
No.
And are you offering any type of educational, like drug prevention, suicide prevention awareness? Are you offering any services like that to open those discussions?
I think that definitely is, is a possibility. We certainly have a wide variety of curriculum as well as resource partners that we could bring in to provide that, that kind of information and programming.
So we provide that at, or clubhouses already. We're, you know, again, it's teens and with their youth voice, we're trying to, the reason we're doing 1:00 is to be able to say, hey, you can earn some points to do the special trips that are happening in the evening, but come in and do that. So we'll see. There's certainly, we have a multitude of curriculums on substance abuse, pregnancy prevention. Of a right and teen mental health, which is already one of the certifications that they can get so that they can help one another. So it's a little bit kind of to see, but again, we can draw on all the programs that we operate year-round.
And since ARPA is soon ending, how are, what's your plans for sustainability for this program?
We're just, we're trying to see what this looks like and collect a lot of data, which I'm sorry failed to mention. One of the things that we talked about when we were talking with the city is that we're, we're a pretty data-driven organization and have been for the, all the years and decades that Becky and I have been there, is we're going to be collecting a lot of data and to see what we're doing right, what are the challenges, what we need to be doing different. You know, there may not be, this may not happen again. I don't know. The thing is, if we can collect enough data and there's enough of grants, we write about 50 to 60 grants every year to support our program, which is why we can allow it to be at no cost to our young people. So there's certainly places that we haven't direct some of that, the resources. If we think this is a great program, the needs are being met. So it's kind of, again, the pilot, we're going to really try to learn and see what that looks like and how responsive and we are and what we're able to do for our young teens.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing, I, I know you touched a little bit about security. And I know that, so you know, one of the biggest needs that young people are out and about are Fridays and Saturday nights. So this will be Fridays and Saturday nights, Saturday nights, 1:00 to 11:35 PM. After which, you know, you know, it's giving them an opportunity to engage in something healthy during the nighttime. But can you talk a little bit, I guess, about the safety aspect? Making sure that it is, it is a safe and healthy place and space even at night?
Sure. So you know, one thing is, is we realize that we're going to have to contract with a professional security company to make sure that we have folks present and visible, walking around the property, in the property. We've also identified that we want to have a one to eight ratio. So one adult to every eight teens and, and that's what's built in. So there will be plenty of adult supervision, you know? And then our model of, of safety and security and, and training staff and identifying and working in the building and, you know, where, where staff should be at all times. So they're always visible, walking around and, and making sure that, that our presence is, is everywhere that teens are.
And the only thing I would add to that is that teens, when they really bought into the program, then they help in that and they make sure, and they're going to say, when they're building relationships with the, the staff that are, that they trust. And we'll say like, oh, this could be happening. I don't know, you know, that they are, because I think the kids are going to participate in, are kids who want to have a good place. And so certainly by setting out the expectations and what we need, it's a pilot program, we're trying it. Let's all work together to make this successful. So your participation in it and your behavior is going to be as big a part of it as anything else that we're going to be doing. And usually teens, our experience has been that they're really responsive and, and want to, they want to do good things.
Great. Any other questions? Seeing none, I think staff needs direction to put this as an ordinance, given that first reading could be next regular meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Jagger?
Yeah, that's quick. It's fine. Still have some information to get. Just want to confirm term would be, couldn't do it earlier in June 12th. I think that works, June 12th to September 1st?
One of the conversations that we were having recently with Parks and Rec that because of the timing, by being able to get here in front of you all and to be able to get all the staff hired and all the training that needs to happen, we're going to push it out a week. And so I think that's the 17th.
So no earlier than June 12th and no later than September 1st, you have your 10 weeks? And then does it work? Because I don't think we'll get first payment under it until after June 12th. That's not going to, I don't want to draft.
Yeah, I think our.
Yeah.
Flow is okay.
We'll get the drafts to them. We'll get their approval and get it on. If that's the direction, Council.
Great. So needing direction to put on first reading at the next regular meeting, which is going to be in two weeks, which is the 22nd. Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Bring it.
Counselor Graham, Counselor Atencio.
I'm a yes.
Counselor Flores, Counselor Mastry, Counselor Winner. Great. Unanimous. Thank you so much, Boys and Girls Club for stepping up.
Again, thank you for your commitment to young people.
Great. Thanks, Boys and Girls Club. Excellent. Well, moving right along on our agenda then, is a follow-up actually to our previous discussions around the police department in terms of recruitment and retention that the union gave us. So can I get Chief Knoller to the podium? And there's a whole slew of guests. So Ms. Pacheco, yeah, Mayor?
Madam Chair, each of you should have in front of you a, a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that's going to be presented tonight. And as you suggested, that's going to be presented by Chief Knoller, Marissa Pacheco, Alex Romero and Bob Jagger. We'll talk about various aspects of that. It'll provide you with data that we've gathered about the police department and their compensation. And as you said, it follows the presentation that we had a couple of weeks ago from IBPO. We all understand that in Pueblo, in Colorado, in the United States, police departments are having a difficult time. Nobody disputes that. Our goal has been and is to make sure that our police officers and our city employees are compensated fairly. After you see this PowerPoint presentation and hear from the staff members who are going to present it to you, I will conclude by letting you know what we've been talking about with the police department, some recommendations that we have moving forward. So let's start with, Chief, you going to start?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're going to be talking about some data related to retention, recruiting and, and other aspects of, of the issues with the police department and manpower. Tonight, we're going to start with talking about the Quartermaster update, which I will cover. Pueblo PD statistical information related to retention and hiring. The HR Director, Marissa Pacheco, will provide. And the analysis of wage increase costs that Finance Director Alex Romero will provide. And then some historical information regarding bargaining with IBPO, which the interim director of the City Legal Office, Bob Jagger, will provide. The first part of this is talking about the Quartermaster system. That's a, a generic term that we're using to describe a new system of paying for officers' uniforms. In the traditional form of the word Quartermaster means we keep a, a supply of uniforms on hand that we would then issue out to people like in boot camp. When you first showed up, you get your, your initial issue there. This is somewhat different than that. This would be something we would send out to RFP that would allow officers a certain amount of money based on, you know, what we decide. Right now, I'm suggesting about $800 annually that they would be able to purchase certain uniform items from. As part of that, I'm presenting that some of that would need to be actual like pants and shirts for uniforms. And then the remainder would be duty-related equipment, flashlights, handcuffs, those kinds of things that, that do wear out over time and need to be replaced. Total estimated cost, if we do the 231 officers, is about $184,800 a year if all positions are filled. Currently, we have 45 vacancies. If those, that was on May 1st, estimated cost for all new hire equipment would be about $2,500 per officer for a total of about $112,500. I would recommend as part of this program that the officers would continue to get their $450 annual uniform allowance for things like dry cleaning and other miscellaneous things that wouldn't be covered through the program. And allow them to keep their uniforms up and, and do those kinds of things. So the total estimated cost at full staffing for the program would be approximately $288,750. If memory serves, that does include the $450 uniform allowance. It, it doesn't include purchasing $112,000 worth of new equipment. But at current staffing levels, that would be $232,500 the way we are right now. If it was implemented July 1st, that would cost about $116,250. Obviously, the purchase of uniforms for the newer officers would probably add to that. It's hard to determine what that number would be. It would be determined based on the amount we were able to hire at, at the time. So that's, that's my conclusion on the Quartermaster system. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Pacheco.
Madam Chair, members of council, Mayor Gradisar, thanks for having us tonight. My part of this presentation is to share statistical information about the police department, both current staff, but also what turnover looks like, retention issues, things like that. So that's my piece of this. So first, want to talk about sworn staffing. And my numbers are going to be slightly different than the chief's on vacancies because my data was as of 4/24 and his is of 5/1. So we've lost two additional folks since then. So this is the, the state of the police department as it stands in terms of staffing. Rank by rank, how many are authorized, how many positions are filled? And then again, how many vacancies we have. So 44 is on my list here. That includes one unfunded deputy police chief. The police sergeant, corporal and police patrol officer and read there that those are the IBPO-covered positions within the department. So admittedly, there are some, some staffing issues for sure. We have vacancies. As I think the, the mayor mentioned, it's not a unique problem for our police department. It's across the country. But we are making efforts to try to address those vacancies. So what are we doing? We, as you know, IU approved a pay increase of $500 per month, effective January 1 for entry-level police officer. That's one thing that we've done. We've really tried to move into more of a continuous posting for recruitments through civil service. That's been a, an effort between both HR, civil service and the police department's recruiting group. Lateral hiring has now been approved. So we are recruiting. We're attempting to recruit lateral hires with higher placement in the salary schedule. So instead of coming in and starting at step one, which we all know is about $58,000 a year, they can actually come in at step five if they have five years of applicable service in another law enforcement agency. And so that, that's a beginning salary of almost $76,000. So there is a, a big difference there for, for laterals. We're currently running about three academies per year. Historically, we have not run that many. It's either been one or two a year. So that's been another effort to just keep the, the recruitment pipeline moving. So this next slide just kind of gives you a sense of what our current sworn PD personnel look like in terms of retention and their length of service with the organization. So this is rank by rank in the chart. As you can see, there are no surprises that the longer you're with the organization, you tend to have a higher rank. You're here longer, promotions happen. And so as you can see, the summary on the right, so as of 4/24/23, the average length of service for our sworn police force is about 11 years. Longest is 31. That happens to be one of our deputy chiefs. And then shortest length of service is four months. And those are our new recruits. So this, this next slide really starts getting into turnover. So where, what's happening with turnover in the, in the Pueblo Police Department? And so this, the next couple of slides here are deep dive into turnover of sworn staff. So this is not just, you know, IBPO-covered positions. This is all sworn uniform staff in the police department. So the chart on the left with the bars give you a year-by-year view from 2019 through current 2023 and what our, our turnover looks like. So when we think about turnover and analyzing it, it really falls into three buckets. Why people leave? Either they're retiring, they're resigning, or there's a discharge. We're agreeing that it's best that they move on. So those are kind of the three main categories. So when you're looking at all of these charts, this and the next few, the, the yellow represents retirements, the purple represents resignations, and the gray represents discharges. So the total of, total number of separations during that almost five-year period, four and a half, 2019 to current date, we've had 90 separations in the police department. So that overall turnover rate is 9.5% for that time period. However, when you look year by year, you can see that there's clearly an uptick in the bars. We are moving in an upward direction. We are having more, we're experiencing more separations. There's no doubt about that. If you'll look between 2020 and 2021, when, when we were meeting about this as a group, we said, what happened there? We went from 8, 8.95 to 12.11. Well, a lot of things were happening, was happening in the world at that time. We were in a pandemic, people were stressed, family pressures. You had legislation that was passed at the state level around that time, which was attributed to some of our turnover. You had a very contentious atmosphere socially around policing, the George Floyd case. All of, all of those kinds of pressures were really coming to bear right around that 2020 time, moving into 2021 where you see that jump. Now, are we saying that every single separation is, can be attributed to those factors? Not necessarily because we, we can't do that and get in everybody's heads, but we do see that there was a change there. However, I would note that in the past, what we would have seen, when you look at the pie chart to the right, which breaks down retirements, resignations and discharges, we would have seen the purple and we would have seen the purple and the yellow reversed historically. Usually, the bigger chunk of separations were due to retirements versus resignations. That is now flipped. So that is a change in our data that started to occur over the last few years. However, not every year is that the case. Look at 2021, we actually had more retirements than we did resignations. So this kind of gives you a broad brush view of what happened the last five years in terms of turnover with the Pueblo Police Department. So then we started digging a little bit deeper. Okay, so when people leave, when are they leaving? If they're separating from the department. So continuing on with that same theme, we have our three buckets, discharge, resignation, retirement. And what you see there is that our discharges, when we're agreeing it's in everyone's best interest, on average, that happens very early in the first couple of years of employment as a sworn police personnel member of the department. For resignations, that jumps up to 4.2 years. That I think that's significant, and I'm going to circle back to that. And again, this is on average. When someone separates due to resignation, they usually have about 4.2 years on with us. Then you look at retirement, not surprising, that bar is fairly high, we're at 23 years, and that's driven primarily by pension requirements. You have to have so much service and age before you retire. So that one's less surprising. I think the real focus is on the center one on resignation. So we are really losing people within the first five years of employment. That's when a lot of our resignations on average are happening. So I think that's the significant takeaway from this particular side. So then, continuing to dig deeper, because I think we all agree that you know, retirements are going to happen regardless of what we do. That's just how our system is built. When you reach those years of service and age, people retire. That's what happens. So if we're primarily, and and discharges, are we worried about those? Probably not as much because it wasn't working out. So that was probably a good thing for those people to exit. So we're really talking about that purple category, the resignations. So what's happening with that? So we dug a little bit deeper and said, okay, why did people leave? So same time period, 2019 to roughly end of April, why were they leaving? Again, we had 53 resignations during that time. So these categories listed here are by the the number one response, number two response, number three. So if you see number of separations, other job law enforcement, we had 17 people leave. That's 32% of the resignations were to go to another law enforcement job. The next is health, family, or personal. That was a variety of different reasons. That category also captured people who said it just wasn't the right career for them. We called that personal. And again, this is based on what we know. Sometimes people leave and they don't tell us why they're leaving. That would be the next category, unknown reason. They didn't disclose to us exactly why they were leaving, but that's 17%. The next category resigned in lieu of discipline. I would say this is kind of a throwaway. As far as resignations are concerned, these are people that were being investigated or were potentially in trouble, and they resigned before that happened. And so seven of those left, but they did resign. They were technically a resignation. Other job, non-law enforcement agency is the next one. So we have five individuals leave, 9% of the the resignations were in that category. The next category, I would say, is kind of like that fourth one, resigned prior to probationary discharge. These were folks that were in the academy that were probably not going to be successful in that, and they resigned before their probation was ended. And then new legislation, as I mentioned, we had one individual who specifically left resigned and said, I am leaving because of the new legislation and what it means for me and my family, and I'm concerned about it. That person has since returned to our workforce, which is great news, but that was a specific reason during this timeframe that 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 person left. So 53 total resignations over roughly a five-year period is what we're talking about in terms of of true leaving voluntarily. So then the next question is, where did they go? If they left specifically for law enforcement jobs, we wanted to say, okay, where did they go and why might they have gone to those other agencies? Again, this is not perfect science here. This is art, but we're gathering information and sharing with you what we have we have discovered. So this chart shows that we had nine of those 17. So again, we're talking about, if you go back to this slide, we're talking maybe? No. We're talking about those 17 at the top, so 32% of the 53, 17 people. Nine went to other law enforcement agencies in Colorado, and the other eight went out of state. So you can see the agency on the left where they went, how many employees that we lost to that agency, and their average years of service at separation. The last column, we pulled, what was, what's the base salary and any bonus that's currently happening in those agencies? Knowing that some of these people left in 2019, 2021, it was impossible to go back and try to recreate what happened at that moment in time. But we just gathered this information to show that, yes, there are agencies that are certainly paying more. That's supported by the data. But there are also other times when it's not, has nothing to do with pay. For instance, we had an individual who left to go to Custer County Sheriff's. They left for a lot less money. However, they had a K-9 unit, and this person really wanted to do K-9, so the person went there. So there are some stories behind these resignations that aren't, we're not able to capture that on these screens, but I do think that it's interesting. Nine people have left in Colorado, other agencies. Average years of service, again, almost four years. We're in that first four to five years of service where we're seeing that happen. Out of state, we have eight individuals leave. This, we couldn't get salaries for. I didn't know exactly where they went, but we had a couple out of Arizona that went there, Florida. One that went to Bureau of Indian Affairs Police, California Sheriff's Office, Ohio Police Department, and Texas Police Department. So for out-of-state, we lost eight. The average years of service at separation was slightly less than our in-state folks that left, so. And with that, I am going to pass the baton to our Finance Director, Alex Romero.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of City Council, and Mayor. I will be covering the wages and the financial data information portions of this presentation. So this slide shows the average base salary as of April 24, 2023 for the ranks of police sergeant, corporal, and patrol officer. The second column shows the average overtime amount per rank for this period of 12 months, May 2022 through April 2023. The last column shows the average salary plus the average overtime per rank. One item to note here is that the compression of positions. So with the average base pay and overtime for sergeant, this is getting close to what a captain's starting salary is at $120,900. And they don't have the option of having overtime pay. Also of note is that as of April 24th, there were seven police officers that were at the starting pay and our overtime totals for the three ranks in total in 2022 was just over 1.8 million, 1.8 million, and for the first four months of 2023, it was $555,000. This next slide shows the negotiated wage increase for the last five years in 2024. In 2019, $140 per month was all ranks of an increase. In 2020, a 3.25 increase was negotiated. In 2021, the scheduled 2.75 increase was withheld due to COVID. In 2022, the increase was 2.75. 23, it was a 7%, and for 2024, a 5.3 increase has been negotiated and set for first reading tonight. And this increase was the same calculation that was used for Page for 2024. And now I'll pass it back to Marisa.
So I just wanted to to quickly go over how we got to that 5.3 to make sure council understands exactly how that works. Because as Alex mentioned, this was the same formula that has been used in the Page contract for the last couple of years. And so police did agree to that for 2024 as well. So there's really two elements to this process. The first one is Consumer Price Index Wage earners changes for the Denver Aurora Lakewood Index January to January. So that's what we look at. So when we pull that, the increase was a 6.3%. The second element of this is to do a regional adjustment is what we've called it. And the way that we get to element two is we use what is called the Cost of Living Index through C2ER, which is the Council for Community and Economic Research. This is a nationally used and recognized leader in economic research. It used to be known as the ACR index, if any of you are familiar with that, but this is a very comprehensive index. It looks at everything from rent, home costs, utilities, medical, yoga classes, haircuts, vet services, food, how much it costs on average to get your tires balanced on your car. I mean, it is one of the most thorough indexes that I've seen, and so it it takes all of those things into consideration, and it says, okay, what's the difference between two areas that we're comparing? So in our case, we're obviously, we're looking at the Denver area as as the comparison point. So this is how we get to how we get the 5.3. 84.5 is the difference that this index shows between Pueblo Cost of Living and Denver Cost of Living. So you can see the calculation up there. 118.8 minus Pueblo's 96.3 for your, that's your composite, everything considered together. And then you can see, taking that away from the national average, how we get the 84.5. So then, to get the 5.3, we blend those two elements together. We say, okay, we know the CPIW is 6.3. And then we have, we apply the adjustment to it. We divide the 6.3 by 100. We take that 0.063 times the the C2ER adjustment, which is the 84.5 you just saw, that gets us to 5.3. So we just wanted to take just a minute to explain that to council, how the 5.3 came to be, since that number's been been floating around as a negotiated amount. And now it's Alex's turn.
Okay, so when looking at the wage increase cost for the city, we must budget and account for all positions, and this does include vacancies. We must include salary-related costs, which total 17.71% for police, 18.68% for Page and Management, and 19.07% for Fire. This includes pension, Medicare, death, disability, and workers' comp. We must include any base building percentage increase to previously negotiated step increases. And what that means is that we have to factor in any steps that will automatically be received by the employee and calculate the percentage increase on that new salary. So here is the wage increase cost, and this slide shows the total amount of wage expense increase in 2024 if we're looking at a 5.3% increase and a 10% increase. Police and Page have negotiated the 5.3% that you see on the first column. Fire has yet to negotiate, and management and appointed is provided here for purposes of comparison only. There hasn't been any decisions made if there's going to be an increase in that area for that group. At a 5.3% increase, you can see the cost estimated is just over $4 million. When looking at a 10% increase, that cost for all groups is estimated at just under $7.3 million. Then, when factoring a 10% wage increase in 2024 to the city's 10-year budget, fund balance available for use in the general fund will be negative by January 1st, 2027. Looking forward, in five years, the fund balance available for future spending will be a negative 7.25 million. And in 2023, or sorry, 2033, in 10 years, it will be a negative $40 million. One alternative that we had looked at was retention bonuses that could be paid out of ARPA. This shows bonuses being paid, retention bonuses as of January, July 1st, 2023, and July 1st, 2024. The 5% redemption bonus and the 10% are shown each year based on the current number of employees. The salary used for the 2023 costs is that of as of April 24, 2023. And the 2024 percentages are based on that step increased salary.
I'll turn it over to Bo.
Thank you. So I'm going to cover the historical wage increase philosophy and what we've done in contract negotiation. And I would emphasize for the last two decades, the 85% of market average for like positions in comparison agent has been the standard when determining wage increases for all bargaining. This 85% target is based upon the differences in the cost of living between Pueblo and the city charter required comparable cities. So under our charter, it requires us to compare when we do interest or advisory arbitration those cities with half a population equal to or greater. Those are Arvada, Denver, Thornton, Aurora, Fort Collins, Westminster, Lakewood, and Colorado Springs. The 85% of average market pay for like positions has been the target and is authorized by city charter. It comes under other similar standards recognizing the resolution of interest review. Specifically, and we've had arbitration decisions that have determined this, the cost of living is a factor customarily considered in interest arbitration proceedings inasmuch as the pay adjustments, whether reached by agreement between the parties or by arbitration rulings, are typically influenced by cost of living considerations between the comparison cities. So in layman's turn, if you go to work in Denver, you're going to have to earn more and generally get paid more for the same position. I would also add that the city has spent considerable time and effort and expense to recognize and defend the 85% benchmark. Not only because it makes sense under for attracting employees, but also because it makes sense for our budget, which I can take you back to 2008 and going forward, we were scared to death of a zero or one or 2% wage increase. In each arbitration, and we've had three separate arbitrations on this specific issue, the arbitrator has sustained and confirmed the appropriateness and legitimacy of the 85% benchmark. So if the basis is to, if the basis is to change the 85% benchmark because of staffing, I think an appropriate question for you to consider is how, will we return to the 85% benchmark when the positions are finally filled, and how is that going to occur? I will do a cleanup on one of the things that Alex had reviewed as she threw in these other bargaining units. And I just want to clarify that that is going to be a charter factor, specifically internal wage consistency, that is, wage increases granted, other bargaining units in the city is a standard that an arbitrator can consider in the resolution of interest tributes, including under the charter factors. And then one other cleanup, I wanted to point out, as far as the potential alternatives on retention bonus, at most under ARPA is 10% that you can fund. So you could do a 5%, 5% or a 10% the first year, and then nothing the next, but I wanted to clarify that.
All right, so that's that's the data that we've put together with respect to the police department. What what do we think we ought to do? It's been suggested that we give them an immediate raise, 1st of July, 10%. We don't think that's a good idea, and for the reasons that have been indicated here. Number one, it's not their contract year. We want to follow that process, I think. So our recommendation is that the contract that's in place now be extended by city council. It's on for first reading tonight. We'd ask that you do that. What we'd want to do and what we're working on is a recruitment problem. We've got that recruitment and that retention problem. We're losing our officers in the first five years, in the first 10 years. That's when they're leaving the Pueblo Police Department. This is something I talked to you about at the retreat in February, is what I would like to do is for the next 50 officers hired by the city of Pueblo, offer them a $50,000 down payment on a house they purchased in the city of Pueblo. offer them a fifty thousand dollar down payment on a house they purchased in the city of Pueblo. That would be in the form of forgivable loan that if they stayed with us for 10 years, the entire amount of that loan would be forgiven. Uh, that will get us over that hump, I think, that we're currently facing where we're losing people i- in that window. We're obviously having a hard time and it's not just Pueblo, it's everywhere recruiting officers. We've got an academy starting in June. You see how many vacancies we have? I think we had a hundred and thirty or a hundred and twenty applicants for that. Chief, you correct me if I'm wrong. We're going to have seven candidates in the June academy. We've got another academy starting in October. We've got a hundred and thirty or a hundred and twenty applicants for that.
Hundred forty eight.
Hundred forty eight now. But and the time to fill applications out, that's passed at this point. So what we're trying to do is work with civil service, say, hey, let's announce this, this program. Let's open that up. So the chief tells me we can do about forty, um, candidates in a class. It doesn't cost us anymore to do forty candidates. I don't think that it does to do seven in terms of staff and teachers and those kinds of things. But we just have not gotten people that are interested in being police officers. And I really think that that sign on incentive of a down payment on a house will make a difference to some people. It might even attracts some people that really want a house. They didn't really want to be a police officer, but they figure I'll do this and who knows, those might be the kind of people we, we'd like to have in the police department. Uh, we're also working on the retention bonus. What we've talked about is ten thousand dollars. I don't, maybe it's ten percent using ARPA funds for the, uh, existing officers that are here who agree to stay for, uh, for two years. Uh, we hope to pay those, uh, funds, use ARPA funds to pay those. And we'd like to get that done by July, the first. Uh, we're also going to implement as quickly as we can, the quarter master system. Um, we're probably going to have to go through an RFP process for that. Because, uh, there's some local people that want to be involved in that, that are providing uniforms now and they'd like a chance to, I think bid and see whether or not they can, uh, comply with that. So in one of the things I think you should know about, you obviously saw the results of the police survey. We've been working with a group called Executive Leadership Group since last fall. They've been working with the police department on a pro bono basis. They haven't charged anything for that. They're still working with it, with us now to try to deal with some of these morale problems, um, in, in the police department. I think they've got some good ideas and we're going to continue to work with them. Um, as we move forward to help, uh, improve the morale and to help work on an evaluation process and a feedback process in the police department that will allow officers to give feedback about the supervision they're receiving, uh, pretty quickly. So those are the kinds of things that you can expect to see from us as quickly as we can put them together. In terms of recommendations to the council about how to move forward with respect to the police department.
Great. Thank you, city staff for all that information. It was pretty comprehensive. So I appreciate all the hard work that went into that. Uh, questions from council, councillor Graham.
A couple, a couple of different sets of questions. So number one, when we talk about, um, overtime and what that looks like for people, and since you're including it in there. Right now, can you answer the question if the officers get a choice on overtime? I know all of watch one was kept over today because they had so many calls waiting. So is that their choice or?
It, the answer is it depends. Some of it is their choice and some of it is not, like many places that are short staffed, forced overtime sometimes as a result.
Do these numbers include the four officers that have quit in the last two weeks?
No, um, the.
The forty three vacancies that we have, um, was as of the end of April. And then we have two additional officers. That's why his numbers were forty five and mine were forty three. I'm only aware of two additional ones since the end of April.
Yeah, there's two more that.
Was there four, chief?
There was two that I had at the beginning of the month and two more submitted their resignation, uh, last week.
Okay, so four additional officers in the last two weeks. And then this question, um, is for Alex. So when we look at the um, negative fund balance, are you saying that if we were to approve um, a ten percent raise across the board? I think the difference between the raise they're about to get now, the five point three and the 10 is about three point two million dollars. Are you saying that that's going to bankrupt the fund balance in the next, um, three years? Yes. So what I'm looking at is on our 10 year budget is the different percentages. And what happens is that if we do a 10% now, then in my, um, budget, I have two percent for each additional year. So it's taking two percent on that higher 10% amount. So that's why it exasper- exasperates it faster. Um, looking at a five point three increase, that looks like we would be at January first, twenty thirty two. So it's a five year difference. And of course there's different items that can be changed within the budget. But having most items in revenue at a two percent and most items in the expenses at a two percent increase each year, just doing that 10% has us looking at that negative fund balance available for use in twenty seven.
Does that also account for all the taper funds?
Yes.
So that's in addition to taper funds. So what we're saying is, as a city, we cannot spend more than three point two million dollars or than, over the next four years where we're going to be bankrupt in, in additional costs.
So what, what it's saying is that if we do the 10% increase this year and then subsequent years, there's just that two percent, all things the same. It would have us at a negative fund balance as of twenty twenty seven. Thank you.
Councillor Tensio.
On that page where it says wage increase cost scenario, twenty twenty four, all groups. Is that at full employment?
Yes. So that's looking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes. So that's doing all, um, all positions and all vacancies, because that's what we have to budget to is.
That's assuming we get the forty three officers employed. No way that's going to happen. And we're notorious for balancing our budget on literally on the backs of positions that are vacant anyway. So, um, how do we manage that? Cause through these years, there's going to be vacancies and we, that's how we've got, since I've been here, that's how we balance the budget every single year is literally on the backs of those vacancies. And, uh, it strategically, we literally don't hire people to fill those vacancies so that we could balance the budget. So.
And, and we would be looking at that.
There's no way that we're going to have full employment. You know, I mean, a police officer is going to retire, but police officers are going to, uh, leave, they're going to get sick, whatever. So. I'm just wondering that, that number doesn't jive with me. It's just, it's a number. Uh, uh, understood, but there's no way that we're going to reach full employment in the police department.
And we would look at that in each year.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is just doing the budget based on the positions that we have and then.
No, I am done. Yeah.
Putting that out to the 10 years.
Each year, those numbers would change based on, okay. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Councillor Flores.
Is there, is there any way of looking at, uh, these cities that we're comparing ourselves with and looking at their budgets? And looking at what, uh, they're paying, which is obviously more than we are, but taking in the, the consumer price index, it basically is a, a different number. But I continually say that, you know, our budget right now is what? A hundred and thirty three million? And you start comparing the budgets of these other communities and they're much higher. And, and so the, the real question is not so much that they're paying more, but what percentage of their budget goes, goes towards safety, both, uh, fire and police? And I don't know if that, that those numbers can be, uh, had. I know what it's, it's some of the work session, uh, they brought up Thornton. Thornton has a, an annual budget of three, almost three times what we have. It's like three hundred and thirty seven million. Uh, so I, I think that's a number that somewhere down the line we need to get. Because if you really want to compare apples with apples, we may be paying, uh, more of our budget toward police and firemen because we are a poor city. But I think that's going to open up another conversation and we, we need to take a look at that.
Councillor Flores, let me jump in because you reminded me of something I should have said earlier. That you'll recall that we use some of our ARPA money to pay for a comprehensive compensation study that we expect to get back in the next sixty days. So when we get that study back, we will have an idea of how we compare overall with, I think the cities we compare ourselves to, or is it additional cities as well?
Um, yeah, the, the study is going to use the cities that, um, Bob mentioned. Um, for fire, it's a little bit different because we have fire districts. So it'll be a few additional ones. And then we also ask them to look at, um, local competitors too. Like what is the county doing and some of the, the major employers in our area?
That's all I have.
So when I was looking at, at, uh, the twenty twenty three budget book from twenty twenty to twenty twenty three, we started out in twenty twenty, um, contributing thirty two percent of our budget to the police. And now we're down to twenty six percent of our entire budget is committed to the police. Um, are we before, I understand what you're saying about having to go into the fund balance because we've been going into the fund balance for the past two years. Are we going to try to re-prioritize our budget needs in order to make these work so that we aren't continuously in the negative? I mean, public safety is the first priority in the bud, should be the first priority for the city. Um, what, what is the plan to re-prioritize the budget so that we can accommodate these numbers? I'd like to know that. And then I'd also like to know, um, in this quarter master estimate that was given to us, I realized that these, um, numbers, what I learned is we're pulled from like national online uniform and equipment providers, which are not very competitive with the two uniform shops that we've had here in business for tens of years. Does that put our local businesses out of shit, out of business if we put that RFP out? And of course they're not going to be able to compete with that. How does that look for those businesses and so forth? You, they, we don't know. Why did you go to national firms looking for a cost?
We are going to do the RFP so that local firms will be allowed to participate in that.
Well, you know, they, on, online services, they don't have overheads, so their pricing is usually less expensive. I mean, what are we doing here for that? It's a discussion that's been going on in the community over this. And so those are some of the concerns that not only the business owners have, but the community as far as going outside and looking for those resources, because they've been keeping those businesses open. Their, their uniforms and the things they need for many, many years.
Ma'am, the estimates that I put up there were based on the amount of money we would let the officers spend. It had nothing to do with who charged what. The amount, the reality of it is if we went to a vendor that was more expensive, it would just take more of that eight hundred dollars and they would be able to buy fewer items with it. Cause the, the goal is to give them a set amount of money and to be able to process this through a vendor that could give us what we need as far as tracking, tracking and a bunch of other things that will be laid out in the.
You went and you based that amount of money to give you, that you're, you're based to give, to allow for an allowance was based off of numbers that were, uh, came from outside sources, not locally, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. That was my point.
Which would mean, I guess, then I would have to give the officers more money per month to, to purchase those items if we went to a, a more expensive vendor.
We're always, chief, we're always looking for ways to keep our local businesses going.
Sure.
Um, actually that sales revenue does come back to the city.
Sure.
And so, you know, we want to at least, uh, be, you know, it, it, how do you change somebody's mind when somebody has a uniform for forty five dollars and you found it for twenty five dollars? What are they going to purchase? The twenty five dollar one? We're already setting that precedence for that. And I think that we should, you know, really give some, we don't want to put people out of business for this.
Right.
Um, so I'm.
But what I'm looking for is a effective vendor that can do all the things that are going to be in the RFP. If that happens to be a local vendor, great. Um, I, I don't personally care, uh, who we go with. I, I want the, a vendor that's going to be able to give us the service and the uniform selections that, that we've chosen as a.
But we have a business community that takes that personal. And so when they're calling me and they're expressing their frustrations, it's I, that's who I represent is the people of this community. I have to let you know that. Okay. The other thing I'd like to know is in the survey, we had a forty percent morale rate and a thirty five percent admin issues. We can't just throw money at things to resolve things. How, what is the plan to try to resolve that other than the pro bono? How long is the pro bono, uh, company been over here working on morale? And admin issues? I mean, we have to, we, we can't just stop with throwing money at it because I don't know about anyone else, but someone could throw all kinds of money at me. If I don't like it, I don't like it. That's not going to change. So what is the plan to address those issues?
You know, I, I, I think that leadership issues are, are certainly an issue at our department. Um, and I will take the blame because I'm the chief of police and I'm responsible for what happens in the organization. So a hundred percent of those issues are mine to deal with. Um, we look at things that are happening on a variety of different levels. We try to balance our need for certain work product with our ability to provide that without causing stress in our employees' lives. Um, sometimes those two don't correlate. Um, you know, sometimes where they do, we, we bend. Um, since I've been chief, we have authorized, uh, officers to show tattoos, which they weren't formally allowed to do if they were below the elbow. We authorized officers to wear shorts in the summertime. We authorized officers to wear beards, uh, which had never been an option prior to, to this, uh, last year. Um, we have authorized a two to one take home car policy. Um, we are doing all kinds of things internally. We just created a room um, that is, used to be a sergeant's office that had been converted for admin use to a lactation room. Uh, we have refurbished our, uh, our, uh, um, uh, break room. We have, uh, altered the way that we do some training. We have looked at a variety of different schedules to try to see if there is room for improvement there. Um, we have tried to, uh, push down, uh, directives that, that take into account the needs of the organization as well as our officers. Um, this is a very stressful time for everybody, uh, within our organization. And it's fair to say that my officers bear the brunt of that, of that stress. Um, right before I came over here, I received a phone call from a gentleman from Washington state that threatened to do things to my wife that I can't repeat here. Um, the, the issue of stress within our organization is real. And as a leader, I, I am, I am disappointed, uh, that, 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 uh, result was what it was. We are focusing internally on ways to deal with it. Um, but we're dealing with a variety of things that leadership sometimes gets the brunt of the attack for that really are not entirely within our control. Um, leadership also describes levels of leadership within the organization that are not just at the top. Um, and we are trying to address those things. Um, you know, I, I think, uh, I, that's the best answer I can give you right now. We are, we are looking at a variety of things. This, uh, um, deal with the, uh, e- executive leadership group. They're trying to put together a survey monkey that, that looks at, uh, a variety of leaders, uh, within our organization. It will allow our, uh, officers and subordinate, uh, personnel to have immediate input into, into how they're being treated by their leadership group. Um, you know, I, I, I think, I think that, uh, that, that's the answer I have for you today, but it is something that is on the top of my mind every day. Every day I wake up, eh, eh, before I go to bed, I try to figure out ways to make my officers' jobs easier and not harder. And sometimes we disagree on what that looks like. Um, I respect everybody in the organization that works for me. I love them as if they were my children. Um, I, I try to deliver the best leadership. Um, I, I try to deliver the best leadership that I know how to do. Uh, eh, and beyond that, I don't, I don't know what else I can do.
Thank you for answering that, Chief. I know it's a difficult question, but that's what's on people's minds. And um, you know, when you answer a question, you're putting your word on it. And that's, that's the expectation for the community that you are addressing it and taking care of it. I thank you for that.
Counselor Warner.
Yeah, that was a great presentation. Thanks. Um, you said you had a hundred and three applications on this current uh, training that's going?
We had a hundred and forty-eight.
Oh, I thought that was the next one.
Which, which one are you talking about?
The one that you have seven people that are actually.
Had a hundred and thirty-seven applicants.
One thirty-seven. So do you have any idea how many of those already had a job by the time they were contacted?
No, I have no way of knowing that. I have no way of knowing that.
Okay. And then how many, how many were thrown out during uh, during the whole process, like they didn't pass a certain test out of those one thirty-seven? I just think these are important questions because, you know, to say that nobody wants to be a police officer when you're having a hundred and thirty-seven applications, I'd like to know where, what, what's going on.
Well, I think some perspectives in order while she's looking for those numbers. When I applied, we had over eight hundred people apply for four jobs. Um, so I mean, I think there is some truth to the fact that getting people into this profession is harder than it was um, for, eh, you know.
Still though, a hundred and thirty-seven people is not zero.
No, it's not.
No.
There are a number of reasons why they fall out of the process. So a hundred and thirty-seven applied, but we only under, ended up interviewing uh, fifty-six because they fell out for a variety of different reasons at the beginning. They failed to appear for the physical abilities test. They withdrew. Um, they failed the written exam. Um, were determined to not be qualified in complete applications. So there's a number of different reasons why they fall out before we get them to interview stage. We did talk to fifty-six, but then they fell out for other reasons. Either they provided false or deceptive misleading information, they failed to meet a qualification, um, failed to appear as directed, failed to follow instructions, history background, moral character, passed over twice. There are a number of different reasons why they fall out. Um, so.
So how much time is there between the application and when you, when you contact them? How much time has passed?
Our recruiter right now, since we instituted recruiter, our recruiter is in contact with those applicants throughout the process multiple times to include prior to the test period. Um, not only just to keep them on in tune as far as to what is going on with the process, but also to provide them pointers for the PAT. Um, pointers for how to study for the written, pointers for how to perform in the interview. They also provide them as they move through the process, our recruiter provides them input on where we are and what the status of these are. And yes, that does mean reaching out to a hundred and forty-eight people uh, consistently, multiple times throughout that process.
Okay. But how, how much time does it take from application to actually get hired?
Well, it depends on how long we leave the application window. The way we set up our recruiting is we start out with our training staff establishing a date for the academy. And they work backwards, working with HR and civil service to determine the length of time it to, it takes to, to do a variety of steps. Those steps include a medical, working backwards towards, towards the uh, uh, the application date. Includes a medical examination and a psychological examination once uh, uh, um, what's the word, the offer?
Yeah, conditional.
Once a conditional offer is made, then there's four to six weeks worth of background investigations that we do. When you're uh, doing background investigations on thirty or forty people, it takes everybody a length of time to do that. And the average length of time it takes is four to six weeks. Then we have the written exam and the PAT exam. Oh, no, we also have a uh, a pre, pre psych and a polygraph that has to be scheduled. Um, and we usually, those are, we're scheduling for larger groups of people because it's the initial group that makes it through the interview phase uh, that goes to those. And so you're talking, trying to schedule, I think this last, in the, in the process you're referring to, I think we scheduled twenty or thirty polygraphs um, and, and that many background investigations. On top of that, there's a pre psych that takes place with our psychological firm. Um, and then there comes the written exam and then the uh, PAT. And then we start, okay, this is where we need to close our application window. And then we work backwards from there, how, how long we want to keep that open. It's important to note that the last two application processes, the first one, the, for the class that starts in June, I think that one was open for a hundred days, a hundred and, how many days was that one open for? No, the other one. Hundred and nine days. And the one that just closed was open for ninety days. Um, so we're keeping those windows open longer to try to get those numbers up. The number, the, the class that, that you're talking about in, in uh, that starts in June with the seven, that was the largest application pool we had had since twenty twenty. Everything else that, that prior to that was no, no more than seventy applicants. Um, and then this last one with a hundred and forty-eight, that one was open for ninety days. So it was about twenty days shorter roughly than the, than the one prior. And we ended up with a hundred and forty-eight applicants. Now we're down to a hundred and five who can take the test. We'll see how many show up on May sixteenth to take the PAT and the written. Then we'll have the psych, the, the interviews. We weed out people during the interviews because they disclose stuff that wasn't on their application or their interview is just not up to par, not what we're looking for. Um, so that's where the process of weeding people out through the hiring process starts.
Is there any way to do, to do it um, in shorter, shorter time periods and make your classes?
Have worked, uh, my staff at the training unit, HR and civil service have worked together for the last three or four years trying to whittle that down, that process down. And we have gotten it, I think, as short as it can possibly happen. And most of these things that, that take the time are based on scheduling for other outside services. Uh, polygraph, the psychological, the background investigation. If we did the background investigation internally, number one, my sergeants would be pulled off the street to even more than they already are to conduct those investigations. And it would probably take us as long, if not longer, to get all of them done. Um, then you got the psychological, the polygraph that have to be scheduled, the uh, um, medical examinations that have to be scheduled. And that's where we run into the length of time. The biggest delay, quite frankly, is the backgrounds. And we don't want to skimp on the backgrounds and hire people into our organization that we shouldn't. So spending the time on the backgrounds is necessary. The truth of the matter is, and I get at what you're trying to, to, to drive at, and I, I wish there was a way to shorten it. But the agencies that hire people in shorter amount of times are agencies that are small, that the chief is the sole decision maker, that um, they don't go through the uh, a variety of tests that we do, or they're doing such a small number that it's easier for them to get one or two applicants in to get those tests done in a shorter amount of time. And it, it just is a process that when you're trying to hire as many people as we are, it's just almost impossible to get done in any shorter amount of time. If I thought that there was a way that we, eh, eh, could get that done quicker, um, I, I would tell you. Um, but eh, I have been beating my head against the, the wall on that for a long time. And, and despite um, my personality, which is pretty driven, we can't get it down any more than we already are. Where we could cut it down is the, shorten the application window and, and make that shorter, but then we're going to have forty or fifty applicants, at least the way things are right now.
Well, at least you'll have folks that are looking for a job right away.
Well, when we had forty or fifty people, we have, the last time we had seventy-five applicants, I've got two people in the academy from that group. So I, I don't know. I don't know if that's true or not. The problem is right now is we get a lot of people that apply with no intention of ever taking the test because they, they're just doing it for, for a variety of reasons, one of which uh, I hear from civil services because they get something for their unemployment that shows that they're looking for jobs. Um, and then other people that change their mind after they make the application process. Some of them, I'm sure, we lose to other organizations. That was true when I applied here back in nineteen ninety-four. Um, I applied for a variety of different places. I got hired here first. And that is, that is the way it goes. Um, eh, eh, there's, there's really no way I can outrace another organization because we, we run an academy. We got to have a start date for that academy and, and we've got to adjust everything based on the start date of that academy.
Well, that's a real bummer. I mean, it is totally.
Absolutely.
Uh, would you ever consider doing a shorter uh, hiring period?
We tried that. Uh, eh, eh, you mean as far as the application window? We tried that and that's when we were getting uh, uh, fifty, sixty, seventy applicants. And I was have, I had, you know, I think the academy before we had five?
Six.
Right. So I mean, the, I, I don't know. I, 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 if I, if I had the perfect answer uh, for all of this stuff, we would be fully staffed. Um, is, is the God's honest truth. But I don't know how we shorten the window of applications. Eh, eh, start out with a number that is lower than even what we're dealing with now and expect to get more people into the academy out of it. Historically, historically, and it's not precise, but you can almost guarantee losing a third of each pool as you go through there. As you go through each process from application to approval, you're going to lose about a third. From approval to taking the test, you're going to lose about a third. From taking the test to um, the, the test in the, in the uh, PAT or, or, or generally you lose very few there. But then you lose about a third in the interview. You lose about a third in the uh, background. You lose about a third in the poly, the psych, all that. And that's how you window down. Uh, so really the bigger the number I can start with, uh, typically statistically, we're going to end up with a larger pool to put into an academy.
Now, this is a question I've asked you in the past. Um, you know, there's a lot of education out there where you can become certified to, to be a police officer, say at a community college. Um, so even though, I mean, are they passing the same kind of skills that you would pass here? I mean, why can't you just um, take them from the community college that they have and put them into training right away?
We can. And, and uh, um, I, I think.
Do they have to go to your academy is what I'm asking?
Right. Um, ideally, they should go to our academy. The time that we find ourselves in now, we just, just uh, six months ago uh, said that we would take people that have graduated from a post-certified academy and put them through our abbreviated six to eight week uh, academy to get them up to speed and put them out on the street. The last two uh, uh, recruiting periods, and I don't know what this one looks like as far as post-certified individuals. Um, but the last uh, two hiring processes, we have not had any post-certified people that made it to the end.
Are you doing any recruiting at those organizations?
We are. Our recruiter went, go, went to PCC. He went to Trinidad. Um, there was a, a, there was an event in Alamosa, but he went specifically to Trinidad to recruit at their academy. Or maybe it was the one in Lahana. I can't remember which. He's been to PCC. Um, he's been to a variety of other locations that aren't post-certified academies. Uh, he's been to uh, Garden City, Kansas, he, or Hayes, Kansas, rather. He's been to Wyoming. He's been to uh, a couple other places here in Colorado. He's going to go to Texas, Fort Bliss, Texas, uh, where they're uh, uh, letting out a lot of army uh, persons. He's been to Peterson Air Force Base for Carson. He's been to a, a vent in Denver. Uh, we're putting mileage on him and, and, and putting a lot of work on him to try to attract individuals. And I think that's one reason why we had a hundred, a hundred and forty-eight applicants this time is because of the work that he's doing.
Yeah, we have to move on. We have to.
I am happy to hear that you made some adjustments with that uh, education piece. Thanks.
Um, just a really quick point of clarification. The, a fa- difference between a five percent retention bonus and a ten percent ret- retention bonus is that's out of their sal- their current salary, five percent of their salary versus ten percent of their salary, correct? Great. Um, and you know, just hearing this whole conversation that just happened, eh, eh, I recognize the importance of recruiting. I'm, I'm happy to hear that recruiting is, is really becoming successful. Um, and for officers leaving in the last two weeks is really alarming to me. And I, I don't want us to become in a situation where we're burning out all of our really great officers and then them leaving, leaving to other agencies. So I think right now, and this is just my opinion, but may, we need to be focusing on retention. Um, given that we have such a great, you know, of, an FTE dedicated to recruitment. And so that's, that's what I would like to see, you know, moving forward, whatever that looks like. It seems like there was some really strong reactions in the crowd when there was some ideas discussed. So I'd like to see what the IBPO has to say. I don't know if this is the appropriate time because Jimmy, we are running out of time. So, um, while you come up, maybe I am going to transfer it to Counselor Attentio.
Yeah, just real fast, in having conversations with other elected officials uh, around the state, everyone's having the same problem. A lot of the cities in, that I elected is that I'm talking to, there's, there's thinking of nine percent, eight percent raises for their police officers. So what I'm thinking is, our eighty-five percent, that target is going to have to, the, the number is going to have to move up. Even if we stay in eighty-five percent and eighty-five percent ain't cutting it because the number one reason people are leaving the police department is money.
Counselor Graham.
Yeah, I just um, had a few officers reach out to me in the last couple of weeks and um, I just compiled a little bit of what they said and I just wanted to read it to everybody. We lost three officers this week, one to another place, one to become a social worker and the other one quit out of the blue today. Don't know why on that one. Great officer. Obvious, talk more. People are talking more. The sheriff's department also starts better pay at entry level than us, but they get personal take-home cars, not sharing. And they have a lot of less calls for service. I think if anyone looks at Pablo, we compete with the Pablo County Sheriff now. We used to take the guys from them, but they are staying now as they get really good raise a couple of years back. I can retire in a week if I want. Tough days ahead for everyone. While the city decides on a course of action, we're actively losing officers and approaching summer with, which is our busiest and most violent time. Retention absolutely needs to be at the forefront, not just with the new recruits. If we keep losing good seasoned officers, our whole department will keep clack, collapsing along with its leadership. I don't know what all the numbers look like, but something different or very close to equal needs to be done to what other departments are doing. That's a new trend. Officers are shopping departments and communities, quality of life and outside work. It's a stressful job. Like I said earlier, I choose the sheriff's office with higher starting pay, a take-home car, a quarter master system and less calls for service. I am a short timer, not going to affect me much. Newer guys can make ten thousand up fast somewhere else and enjoy less stress. I wouldn't be surprised if we were seventy down by the end of summer when all forced o- overtime is fifteen hours a day is kicking our butts. It's really getting worse here. Just lost another officer today that resigned. Something drastic and bold needs to happen sooner. This community is going to be hurting with our lack of services and reef, resources available. Lost four officers in the last three weeks. I think as we approach summer and that may increase more and without much notice, I care about this town and this department, but this is the worst shape I've seen it in sixteen years.
Counselor Mastry and then.
Uh, Mr. Jagger, could you please explain to the public and everyone the collective bargaining process and how we have the union in place and they work with the administration of this city to negotiate these deals? I am not saying that our officers don't deserve better. Okay? But now you're putting counsel in a place that we're being pulled into this and because this is not how collective bargaining works and this is not how the negotiations work with the police. You guys do all of that behind the scenes and then you bring the contract to us because both parties have agreed to those terms. And I get a lot of scoffs. I get a lot of, you know, upsets that you think that counts, they think that council is going to resolve this there. If we go out of contract, they are jumping out of their contract. What does this mean and what, because my experience from being in the union is once you open up the contract and jump out, guess what? It's all game, it's fair game for both parties. They could ask for something, you can tell them, I'm not giving you this. In fact, I might be giving you less than what you negotiated for. What are, what, let, let people know what could actually happen here and how far this can go.
So correct. And we agree with you. That's why the contract extension is before you and we're recommending you approve it. So you're not in any sort of mandatory negotiations. Any negotiations in that aspect have nothing to do with the charter. They're just voluntary. You don't have to do them. Uh, council can direct what they want on those. They usually do that and, and close executive session, direct negotiations. Mayor can direct those negotiations. That obviously has to come before council. We agree with you. Eh, eh, and our recommendation is we have a contract. Uh, we're going to request you to extend it under the terms. Uh, anything beyond that, and we've done that before, that's voluntary on the city. You don't, you're not subject to it. And I think this issue came up because I think there was some desire to do something separate from what the contract has agreed to. But that's purely voluntary. So we are in agreement with that. We are recommending. But that's purely voluntary. So we are in agreement with, that we are recommending the extension. And if you want to do anything voluntary, that that's up to the city. You're not bound to do.
So we are, in order for voluntary, it needs to come from ARPA funding, correct?
I'm sorry.
Would it need to come from ARPA funding, the voluntary?
So that that's completely your discretion, what direction?
We have no other choice, either ARPA funding or the fund balance, correct?
Well, that's your discretion as far as what you even want to do. You don't have to do anything if you extend the contract. But if you want to do it, there's a number of options open to you. One of could be using ARPA funding. And do a five percent in July and a five percent the following year. And then we'll be in negotiations the following year anyway. And they can raise these issues of staffing if they, and to the extent they exist in that year. That's one option. You could do an option where you agree to voluntarily amend the contract. Even if you've passed the extension and come back and say, yeah, we're going to increase ten percent. You got to live with that and figure out how you're going to fund it, but that's that, those are options.
And if we give from ARPA funding, that means that when the contract comes to negotiate again in twenty twenty four. There's a possibility that they may not have that money to negotiate with because that's gone.
So the ARPA regulations, one second, I think you got one shot. Maximum ten percent for a category of employee, ten percent of their base pay. You want to do a category of employees, which would be the police department. So yes, you could not do another bonus retention if you've done ten percent.
Lot of factors to this and to try to to have shoved it into today, today's meeting. Because, you know, all parties have to have to be satisfied here at the same time we need. It counsel are, we were elected to be good fiscal stewards of the taxpayers' money. That's what we are. So if we are, if our accounting department is telling us that we could be negative. In the fund balance from years to come because we take such a high increase, we have, we just can't. I mean, I I don't know if you guys are believing that coming out of accounting or if you have more questions. But I don't understand how as good fiscal stewards, we're supposed to decide this from one meeting to the next. I still think it needs to be. This decided what, what route we're going to take because you're throwing, they're throwing so many different things at us.
Well, and you know, just to, I I guess, following Counselor Maestri. The mayor and IBPO have talked a little bit about what that would look like. Mr. Kintana, do you want to talk a little bit about what IBPO's?
Yes, so our whole intention behind this is just bringing something forward with the city. Again, it was never an intention to break contract. Or anything like that. It's what rose to the top and that's what I presented two weeks ago. Since that has happened, all I want to do is talk so we can fix out, fix what the, what can we do to fix our retention issue? The mayor has since met with us. There is something in the works. We are going to meet tomorrow as a union and talk about it. And see if we're in full agreeance with it. And all again, all we can say is go forward and say, yes, we are. At the end of the day, if the city says we don't have any money, guess what? We're in a contract and we very well know that. And I've been called incompetent. And a whole bunch of stuff over the past couple of weeks and that's, we know where the position we're in. We know we go to negotiations next year. And again, that wasn't the intent of it. And at the end, if nothing happens, nothing happens. The only thing that who has to answer for that are the leaders of the city that control everything. And that was the whole purpose of this whole thing. We're going negotiations in twenty twenty four. Those will start in January twenty twenty five. And we go forward with that. And that's what has been in the works with the mayor. We sat down and talked to him early this week. We're meeting tomorrow and we should have an answer Wednesday morning at the earliest.
Great. If we can be informed about how those conversations go, you know, I I think it is. This is an unusual circumstance in that you guys are down so many officers and in turnover is pretty high in the last couple of weeks. And that's, that's nerve wracking, at least for me. So if we could be, if we could just know the outcomes of that meeting, I think that that would. That would be great. Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, city staff for that presentation. It sounds like next steps will be dealt with by tomorrow. So I I appreciate all parties in having that conversation. It sounds like there's. Next steps, and that's always helpful. So now I'll take a a motion to go into executive session. So can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I think I got that. I move to go into executive session. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations. And our instructing negotiators under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two print four print E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. To instruct negotiators regarding economic development projects and issues presented by the Pueblo Economic Development Corporation.
Great. I have a motion. Can I get a second? Maybe. All right.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Great. So we will be going to executive session after we adjourn from executive session. We'll come back out here for to have our regular meetings.